Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Love the echo.
Approval of the agenda. Public comment. Approval of minutes of June 9th, 2022 Select Board Meeting. June 16th, Special Select Board Meeting. Warrants payroll June 17th. June 24th, Accounts payable June 17th, June 24th, Accounts payable. Newtown Hall, June 23rd. Correspondence. Access weight permits. Old Business Select Board Meeting. Time discussion. Diesel emission reduction financial assistance program. Sheriff's contract discussion regarding cannabis next steps. Green Mountain Race Track discussion. Executive session legal Hagerty versus Towne offer of judgment. Executive session contract and cost sharing discussion. Public comment adjourned. Entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion.
Second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Would like to open up public comment.
No hands.
Approval of minutes. Minutes of June 9th, 2022 Select Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second it.
Any discussion of corrections? All those in favor? Minutes of June 16th, 2022. Special Select Board Meeting.
So moved.
Second. Any corrections discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Warrants payroll June 17th, 22, $13,770.10.
So moved.
Second it.
Corrections discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
June 24th, 22, $13,196.34.
So moved.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable June 17th, $43,881.38.
So moved.
Second it.
Discussion? Questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable June 24th, $34,747.84.
So moved.
Discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Accounts payable in Newtown Hall, June 23rd, 22, $8,660.95.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence is from Ellen, correct?
Yeah, and there's one from me as well. The BCRC.
Oh, okay. To the Board of Selectmen, this is from Ellen. Reference tax sale, June 17th, 22. From Ellen Stromeyer, delinquent tax collector. She's requesting the Board to appoint a select person to attend the next scheduled tax sale dated July 19th, 2022, at 10:00 a.m. At this time, there will be three parcels. These parcels were removed from the tax sale in June.
That's a Tuesday.
All right.
I can, I'm working.
I can.
Can you make any about me?
I should be here.
Okay.
Let's do the same thing, whatever, both of us, that's fine, unless somebody else wants to. Everybody else has a daytime job. Jamie does too. I can, I can make that work for myself. Okay. This is from Tara. We received one submission for our municipal RFQ. It was from the BCRC and is attached. Do you accept their submission and approve them moving forward with the project? Everybody read that from Jim Sullivan? What's your pleasure?
I'll nominate the BCRC as our municipal planning consultant.
Second it.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We don't have any excess weight permits?
Nope.
Old business?
I had a couple of questions. I wanted to know if the cameras were brought or bought and have been put up.
So the cameras have been purchased and now that Hannah and I have our work phones, we can hook them up. And I've asked Derek Taylor to climb and put the cameras in so that people can't steal them.
And then my second part to that question is, will there be somebody that will check on them on a schedule, like, once a month or? I don't know anything about.
So the pictures will go to the cloud on our phones and then yes, we'll.
Like, if you see something happening, then you would go get the phone and check it?
Yes.
Okay.
I can show you something right now if you want.
Yeah, like they come through and then we would.
They come through to the phone right away.
And probably our buildings and grounds guy could go and check on the actual cameras themselves when necessary.
Make sure it's still there, not smashed.
And I wanted to know if we had heard anything back from the lawyer on the solid waste ordnance?
Not yet.
Nothing.
Yeah, they responded.
Correct. Okay. And then my third question was, has a dog kennel been ordered and has the prep work been done or started?
I talked to Joel just maybe a week ago and him and Tom and I are telling them I am looking out the site where it's going to go. They've been talking with each other. It is ordered and it should be here at the earliest July 28th, I believe. That's the earliest it will be here. But everything is going to come out.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Select Board Meeting time discussion. This is kind of, this was kind of me. I want to put something on here. In my, our meetings run fairly late. So we have a lot of stuff on them. I've contemplated changing our meeting time to 6:00 instead of 7:00. I talked with both Tara and Hannah about this and they were both pretty comfortable with changing that time. I don't know if everybody can make it, but I'd like, I'd like to change the time from 7:00 to 6:00 start.
Majority of the time I should be, have no problem.
I'd say the majority of the time I'm okay with that, but what about 6:30, kind of somewhere in the middle? And the reason I say that is, I know that probably I'm the traveler among the group and travel seems to be picking up again now that COVID is dying down. And I will often be on central time zone. And that means calling in at, at 6:00 is calling in at 5:00. And that, you know, I'll just be leaving a customer. But I don't want it to hinge on me.
Well, I think, I think that's why we're having a discussion. That's why I wanted to originate this, Bob, because it's like, if we can't, if we can't have, if we can't have a full board participation most of the time. I mean, and there's times when everybody's going to be absent. But for the majority of the time, if we, if 6:30 is going to work, then it's, you know, I think, I think both, both of them have families. It does, you know, for Angie and other people who have to get up at, you know, getting out of here at 9:30, 10:00 o'clock, whereas if we even start a half an hour early, it's 8:30, 9:00 o'clock versus, you know, so. Hey, I'm up, I'm up for anything. I, 6:00 just popped in my head, but I'm certainly open for, for discussion and that's why we're doing it.
Well, I'm going to contradict myself then. And that is, even though what I said is true, I think there's probably more benefit to 6:00. I should have enough visibility to where I'm going to be if we have to reschedule one for seven because, because I'm in a different time zone or whatever. We can always do that on a case by case and that's probably better. So I'm in agreement with 6:00.
Anybody else have a, have a question, you know, comment? I mean, and I don't, I seriously.
Can we start at 6:00 and have a stop at 9:00?
Hard stop.
Hard stop at 9:00. Hard stop at 9:00.
It's hard to do that when you get, you're in the middle of the.
There's an executive for lawyer or whatever.
I don't.
Legal, that's different.
We can do whatever the Board wants. Okay, obviously, because that's what we are, is we're a board. And boards make decisions and we all have to follow that. I personally have a, a problem with a hard stop because if we're in the middle of something that's very important.
Interesting. Obviously you wouldn't. You're just kicking the can down the road.
But if you, but if you, if we say we have a hard stop at 9:00, then we have to stick with a hard stop at 9:00.
Well, how about?
Kind of.
Stop at 9:00 unless the Board votes to go beyond. And, and we would have, but it would force us to actually say, do we really need to be here past 9:00? Or what else can we remove or put off on the agenda? Because if we have six more agenda items, how many of those are really crucial for that evening?
Well, they just say it's 6:00. Six, maybe 9:00 is more doable if we start at 6:00.
I think so.
Yeah, I think so.
I think we're, you know, we're getting, we're getting our stuff done. We're getting a little more.
And you just try to, with the agenda, send out that sort of lengthy paragraph that says, you know, that kind of touches on things to think about before we're here. That moves things along.
I think that was.
That was awesome because it gives us a reminder.
It reminded me to be here for 6:00 today.
Yes.
Um, I don't, I don't know if we need to vote on that.
I think we should.
Then that's perfect, then we will.
Only because for the public.
I'll entertain a motion to, at our next regularly scheduled Select Board Meeting, that we start at 6:00 p.m. to our future meetings. For, in all future regular, in all future regular meetings. Now, special meetings, we may.
Change.
Change, but all of our regular Select Board Meetings from here on in, we start at 6:00.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Angie wants to hear it, so.
And, and we can, we can.
If we start at 6:00, we should be done for.
We should be done.
Yes.
Was Joel coming in? Joel Barrington about the waiting room?
No, I told him that he didn't necessarily have to be here because I'm aware of the.
Then, then you go.
And that's why he sent the letter.
I wasn't sure, didn't want to cut him out if he was zooming.
No, I understand it all and everything. So for a new loader, it's $225,000, correct? $54,092 for the grant.
Yep.
So that leaves a total of $170,908 left. We only have $12,000 in the equipment, but only six of that is for the roller. Has the roller, have we received the roller yet? And paid for?
Yes.
Okay. So that six would be 12 then. I don't think that we should take the whole equipment fund out of there. I think we should leave like six or 12,000. So anyways, I just used the amount of 100,000 from the equipment fund. That still means that we would have to finance $70,908.
Well, I think what's, I want to hear Tara's presentation on this because she has been working.
So he said that he could also get some scrap value out of it after.
Right, but do we know how much that is or no?
He said around 10, 10,000.
Okay.
And he also said that you guys were in talks about purchasing the loader over the last year or two and that most of the things that we're paying on have come off. We're only paying on one, one vehicle currently.
Yeah, a couple, no, I think.
And we usually tend to keep two, like two payments.
Two payments?
Yeah. So I didn't have a lot of information other than that. Other than what he sent to you.
This is only, this isn't a guarantee. This is only a.
It's not a guaranteed, but it's a, we are basically kind of like a shoe win.
I mean, I read the whole thing.
Yeah, it's more than likely ours if you guys choose to go that direction.
I talked with Joel about this the other day, actually. I was, the other day when the wind was blowing crazy, I happened to be driving down Cedar Hill Road and he came up behind me because they were, had a complaint from Tara. Not a complaint, but a call about a tree in the road. And they were like two minutes behind me and it's like, Jesus, that was quick. But anyways, we kind of got talking about it as I was helping him and Mike cut the chain and throw it out of the road. Loader does have 16,000 hours on it. It's never had, we've never had any.
Major issues yet.
Motor work or anything done to it. It's original. Which is a testament to the way the guys keep stuff up anyways. Okay, let's face that. You know, they're, they're maintaining their equipment, that's for sure. You know, to get 16,000 hours. But my concern and Joel's concern was not so much in the summertime when you're loading gravel and whatever, that's not as critical as in the, in the winter on salt. Yep. You know, sand and salt. It's really difficult, and I've done it, to load those trucks with the backhoe. It's just a lot more time consuming. So that's kind of, you know, his, you know.
What year in bucket was he looking for? I didn't know if he expected that or.
I don't know if he, I don't, I don't think that's in here. That's just not.
He just said a new one was 225,000.
Yeah.
A Cat 938, I'm assuming you can get different sized buckets on it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Generally, they, they standard with a four yard.
Well, I didn't know if we should take the whole 112 because I know that in that same statement, he said that they spent almost $12,000 on another vehicle on the maintenance and I didn't want to take and make that zero.
Down to zero.
Zero, and if something happens, they wouldn't have any money to fix something. That's my only concern was.
Right.
That you have to leave some kind of money for.
Mm-hmm. Well, I think.
Something, if something happens.
Right.
And I didn't know if we had gotten the roller or not yet. It had been paid for and.
It's mounted and they've been using it.
Oh, good.
Believe it or not.
I trust, I trust Joel's judgment.
Oh, I do 100%. I was just letting people out there know what we're talking about.
Yeah, no, I understand Ange for sure.
Trade in, he would only get like around 30,000 if they were to trade it in instead of going with this program. It would get less than.
So we're probably looking at, at the most, probably 50,000, 55,000? Probably?
I just, you know. And Joel will understand where you're coming from.
Oh yeah, absolutely. I think they do a great job and I'm all for it. I just want people to realize what we're spending.
Right. Well, somebody complimented him on the new truck like the other day and then it just worked out perfect that the one that it's replacing happened to be right there and he says, well, that's the one it's replacing. They're like, wow. You know, so they could actually see them side by side, why we needed a new truck when they saw the old truck.
So was he looking for us to vote on this, Tara?
Yes, and he said it's 60 with scrappage.
60 with what?
Mess off on the table. Yes, and he would need you to sign this if you, if you choose to do it.
What's the Board's pleasure?
We're looking for a motion to spend up to $60,000 in conjunction with other monies to replace the.
Bucket loader.
The bucket loader. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. It's off, go ahead.
And we have until September 30th of '23 to purchase and spend the money once we get the grant for 54,000.
I've got to apply for the grant now.
Correct.
That's the deadline's coming up.
I don't, I think it's more than 60,000 because there's 112 in the equipment fund that we would be spending.
Yeah, so I'm sorry.
Financing.
You're right. We would need to, we would need to get 60,000 to add to the 120, 112,000 that's in the fund plus the grant.
That's right. I just want to make sure that we're.
Very clear. Very good, very good call out. Thank you.
Yeah, we, we would be financing approximately 60,000.
Little bit more than what the grant is.
Right.
2,000 more than the grant is.
Yeah. What's the Board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we, that we borrow up to $60,000 to be applied towards the replacement of bucket loader. We would also spend the, the current fund that is approximately 112,000 to go towards that. And that's assuming that we get a grant.
And apply for this.
Apply for the.
Diesel emission financial assistance program.
All right, I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm looking forward to seeing how the notes on that come up.
I bet they come out good. Next item is the sheriff's contract. Did everybody read that?
I did.
So I, I would like to ask when, when was our last increase? I know we went from.
Last year.
Last year.
Yeah, and that was a, that was substantial if I recall.
Yes, it was.
45. This is a 15%, a little more than a 15% increase.
But I'm sure, and I'm not, I'm sure it's the gas prices and all that stuff on top of it.
Because it went from, it was 50, right?
Right, and it went to 52. So that's 15, 60 a week.
Wait a minute. We, our current is 50? I thought our current was 45. I thought it went up to 45 the last time we talked about it. But maybe I'm, I might be remembering it wrong.
I thought it was, it was 45. Maybe you're right. I can.
I thought it was 45.
I'll be all wrong.
So anyways, $52 an hour times 40 hours a week, or excuse me, 30 hours a week is 15, 60 a week. So times 52 weeks a year, that's $81,000.
I'm sorry, what was it, times 30? About 30, 30 hours a week.
Yeah, 30 hours a week.
No, it's 252. Yeah, so you're right, 81,000.
81,120 a year. I mean, it's about $6,240 a month.
You were right, Bob.
With four weeks.
It was 45,000.
It was 45 and now they've gone to 52.
$45 an hour.
And the 45 was about a 10% increase at the time.
Right.
Something along those lines. I, I remember I had miscalculated and something corrected me. And then, so that's. Hourly increase year over year.
Well, the increase this year, I can understand due to just the fuel cost alone.
And everybody's upping their pay and I'm sure they're doing the same.
I do.
Mike's opening a window.
Got to remember closing.
Mike just broke the window.
He just broke the clip.
Oh my God.
That anti-theft device didn't work.
It was more like the child safety thing.
Child safety thing. And they're paying.
Just a little.
Have William check into that.
His first job.
Things fixed, we need to hear.
No, no, it's hang the sign, fix the window.
Hang paintings, all the pictures.
Sorry. It's so hot in here right now, it's crazy. Oh yeah, it's, it's about a 15, a little over 15% increase.
Yep.
And how many hours of patrol coverage is it for?
Well, we added extra money into the budget.
To try to get more hours.
Try to get more hours, but we're going to have to. I think we wanted to go to 35 and now we're not going to be able to.
So now it's going to stay basically the same.
Stay at 30. Well, what's it state right now? Does it say?
It says 30 because it's based on the amount we have budgeted.
In this statement, you're missing, we're missing June, correct? Because that's not a, okay. I kept looking at it like we're missing a month.
Yep.
So, so with the $52, $22 an hour and the 30 hours a week is basically the same money that we budgeted for at $45 and 35 hours.
Yep. Right.
It's the same, it's the same money. Just we're not getting the.
We're going to go to 30 hours.
We're not getting the five extra hours that we were hoping to get in our budget.
Exactly.
So it's basically the exact same money.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
Yep.
What's your pleasure?
So I make a motion to accept the sheriff's contract at $52 an hour for 30 hours a week.
Any discussion?
How about a second?
I'll second.
I was hoping. Any discussion?
Do, do we ask the sheriff's office if the hourly rate is negotiable? I mean, is it just they put it out and everybody pays it? Because it's a, I mean, like we said, it's a 15% increase and it's coming off of a 10% increase. That means in the last two years, it's gone up 25% approximately. That seems considerable.
I am, I think we, we could ask, I guess, Bob.
Or, or ask what's driving it. I mean, I know fuel is definitely going to be part of it. But if you were driving, say, 90 miles a day while patrolling or, or I guess it's more like 90 miles a day. Quite sure how to, I'm not quite sure how to come up with that, but.
Fuel and retention pay, I think, with this new COVID world we live in, I believe are the two driving forces.
I'm just trying to justify it, that's all.
Me too, 15%. 15% increase is.
It's hard to swallow.
Financial, that's, that's a hard, that's a hard increase to swallow.
And if, if they hadn't had an increase in a while, then it would make more sense. But coming off of a 10% increase and directly into a 50% increase. I just want to ask the question. Can we vote on this? Do we have time to vote on it in the next meeting? And can we ask that question first?
I don't know when the contract's up, do you, Tara?
It's the end of the month, 30th.
That's what I thought, June 30th.
Seven days.
Joel dropped it off last week.
Bless you.
Excuse me, thank you.
I, I think that. I think that we're, we're, we're kind of under the wire.
Yeah.
Unfortunately. I think it's a question that should be addressed next year prior to.
Can we request that the contract be given to us 30 days prior?
That's, that's, I always had an Angie. And I think we're, we're coming under, we're, we're going to be under a new sheriff in, in Benton County anyway.
Come November.
Come, come November. So I think that's a fair assessment to next year in May. Ask the sheriff, whoever it is, to bring a, a new contract to us in May rather than two weeks before.
Exactly.
We have to sign it so we can hash it out and ask questions such as what we want to ask tonight.
Right, because there's nobody here. I mean, I could call Jill on my phone.
Well, yeah, I could too, but he's not the person to be asking.
Asking this question.
Their question would be to ask, would be to be asking Chad Schmidt at this time because he's, he's the sheriff, but. I, I think when, I, I think if we sign, if we decide to sign this contract, I think when we send the signed copy, we request a new contract in May of next year.
30 days prior.
Yeah, or at least 30 days prior so that we can discuss it and hash it out and ask questions. It gives us a little time to ask some questions.
Ask a representative to be present.
That's right. That's right. Because they have in the past.
Yeah. Chad did sit in meetings before.
Exactly, so.
And so hasn't Joe.
So I, I think that's pretty fair. And I agree with you, I think we should, we need to ask these questions. Unfortunately, I don't know if we have a lot of time right now.
Right.
They're killing. Though I may have screwed up the math, if I'm doing it on just fuel alone, it's about, you know what? I'm gonna keep my mouth shut because-
I'd do that too, Bob. Good choice sometimes for me.
Okay, we have a motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I seconded.
Any more discussion? That was good discussion, actually.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Perfect, that was, that was good discussion to be honest with you. Discussion regarding cannabis next steps. You were all here the other night with Nelson on, on the sixteenth. What's the board's pleasure?
Well, my thought is, I apologize for not being here. I couldn't be, I had travel interruptions and plane on a tarmac and called. So I couldn't even let you know I couldn't make it. But, but I did watch portions of that meeting and, and read the, read, read the minutes. One of the things that struck me is that there was one thing that was said, that if you have a violation in your background and, I, I guess I'm okay with if you get that expunged if it was some lower level, lower level issue. But it sounded like Nelson said that those people with those issues go to the front line, and that didn't seem appropriate to me.
That's the state, Brian.
And that's, and it's the state, I mean, he's just telling us what the state is, is telling us.
Giving us the facts.
But Nelson also made it clear at the beginning that he's kind of been out of the loop on that part of the legislation for a little while, so.
I think, I think there's a couple of things here on this. I think one thing is whether or not we opt in for, for the retail portion of it. And the town certainly spoke pretty-
Strongly.
Strongly.
My feeling is we opt into the retail and we opt out of the commission, because the commission, I don't think serves a purpose at this point. Well, I think, I think the commission, Brian, I disagree with that. Well, let's do one at a time.
Okay.
Cause I think the commission could get a little more discussion. I think the town spoke pretty strong on, on the opt-in, so, you know.
Across the board, they did.
Right. I'll entertain a motion to opt in to the retail portion.
So moved.
Do we gotta do them one at a time, or can we do these all at once?
The retail, yeah.
Any more discussion on that part of it? All those in favor?
Aye.
So now developing the local cannabis commissioner board or whatever.
LCCC, local cannabis control commission.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Commission.
But I think, the way I understand it is we're not gonna supersede the state unless we're a little bit stricter, I guess. But I also think that, I, I, and I don't wanna over-govern anything, but in my opinion, if you have some local control, how, even if it's a minute amount, you still have some local control. And I don't think we have to decide how we're gonna create the commission tonight, because I think that's for some extensive discussion on, on how we do it, whether it's, whether it's two people or four people or who it is or how we do that. I think it's a matter of whether or not we wanna have a potential for local control. And my, my opinion is that we do have some local control over that. Tara?
Carl Strohmeier shared a really good thought after the last meeting. He was saying that he thinks a whole commission dedicated to it might be a little bit of an overkill, but since the DRB looks at permits, business permits anyways, there will be some oversight regardless of the business that's coming. And then if we could treat it sort of like we do the liquor licenses where the select board approves it, approves what comes from the state, because they're doing such extensive background checks and things like that. And maybe the secondary approval on the license piece of it by you guys, and then the business oversight by the DRB. That was, that was his idea that I, and the other boards kind of seem to share that opinion that maybe a whole commission dedicated to it might be a little bit too much and finding people to, to be on it.
Well, I think, right, and I think that's a discussion that needs to be probably longer than we wanna spend on it tonight, so I think we should give it some thought.
So tonight, we're just discussing whether or not we want an LCCC.
I think so.
And, and not discussing how, how we go about it or who we appoint to that.
I think so, Bob, because I think it could be an extensive discussion on how we do it, who gets appointed to it. You know, I think, because I think, I would hope that every one of us has some different opinions on all of it. You know, who is, who isn't, how you do it, how you set it up, how many years is it, is it, is it revolving, you know, there's, I think there's a pretty extensive, could, could be, could, might not be.
And I hate to say it, but I'm, I'm really not all that clear yet. And even though I read the minutes and I watched the meeting and I, I read some of the documentation, I'm really not all that clear on the pros and cons of having the commission.
Well, I don't think-
That's my feeling on it.
And I, yeah, honestly.
I can reach out to the state and let them know that you have voted to opt in and summon the evidence and then ask them for further guidance on, on the local commission piece.
And I, and hopefully they're not, I, I mean, I don't wanna sales pitch on it. What I really want is pros and cons. Here's what some people, here's what some have experienced, it's the bad side, but here's the good side. Because, I mean, everything has pros and cons, and that's really what we have to wait for Powell and come up with the most responsible way.
As a writer.
Right, and I'm, you know, I was listening to Nelson the other night and, and he, he came up with his, you know, with his opinion, which is, is kind of the same opinion that I am, you know, if you have some local control, it's always better than not having any local control. Hannah?
I think my take on it, listening to Tara and just like the training and stuff, like whether you have the LCCC or not, the state's still gonna do what they're gonna do with the LCCC, it's really just a point of contact, like you're being-
From the state, right?
Yeah, because if you don't have it, the same things are still gonna happen.
Just somebody else.
But if they have a person to contact, you'll know what's going on, right?
Yeah, because otherwise the town will still know, but not until after.
After the fact.
Because it's a permit, so.
Right.
To me, that's a huge pro.
Yeah.
Right.
But there probably, there very well could be some huge cons out there too, that we're not-
I mean, right now Chester, I think, is the only other town that has, well, local CCC. We would be appointed Tara to be our contact presently to the cannabis control board upstate.
I think we, let's, let's, I hate to table stuff, ugh. Let's, let's put that off to the next meeting, our next regular meeting, the, the local control commission, and then we'll, we'll put that on the agenda for then. And we'll discuss it at length and decide whether we do or don't, and, and then we can decide if we do, then who it is, and I don't, I don't necessarily disagree with the DRB because they're the licensing portion of it anyway, that handles, you know, that, the permits and all that kind of stuff anyway, so.
Nelson said he was gonna give you a contact person, name and number. Did you contact that person? Did they know anything about the commission?
I haven't been able to get in touch with them, yeah.
Okay.
Well.
I was just wondering if they have.
Yeah.
Any opinion on that, like if it's-
That's a great contact for Tara to, to-
Okay.
Reach out to.
Thank you.
So I think, I think we'll put that, the local control commission on to the next agenda, and then we can tackle it then and take care of it.
Okay.
For our next, our next regular board meeting.
Another question I had was, on that town vote, was retail growth and farming, all three of them.
You can't opt in to the cultivation or any of the other parts of it. You can only opt in to-
To retail.
The growing's gonna happen whether you like it or not.
Right.
Okay, well, like, that's why.
The only way that we have control is through the board for like fencing and stuff like that.
But it can't be anything that's targeted specifically at the cultivation.
Right, if we do-
No, I understand, I just-
Exactly.
But I was, I was, that's where I was going.
Back, signage restrictions, our restrictions, something like that is, has to be across the board.
Yep.
Right. We can't.
And you can't even just hold up somebody's permit application. You know, you can't stonewall.
No, I think, I would love to get ten percent for the town, but if we did it for that, we'd have to do it for everybody.
Right. But the, the state should have taken care of that.
Town, well, they do have that.
And the state might come back and say, oh, we've just opted to give municipality some, but opting in makes it so we're not preventing businesses.
Right.
Right.
That's the biggest.
So hopefully, you know, hopefully we get some at least tax revenue of business development property in.
So, so wait a minute, not opting in means that nobody, that they can't open a retail shop?
But they can still open a cultivation.
I'm sorry, I, I'm choosing opting in with LCCC.
Okay.
You can opt in without an LCCC.
Right, right.
We just did.
And we just, yes, okay.
Any more on the cannabis? We all good with that?
Yep.
Green Mountain Racetrack discussion. I don't wanna spend a whole bunch of time on this tonight, because I don't think we're totally prepared for it, but let's talk about that.
So, uh, my opinion is that, and even though we, I know, I know with Mike, you like to move quickly, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be of the opinion that we need to slow down. The, I think it's too early to even schedule a public hearing, a public hearing, which we currently talked about as the twenty-first of July.
I don't think we talked, it's not, it's not really a public hearing.
But it's, but, my, my point is, we, we had that original meeting and, and, you know, the individual here did, did a good job presenting the stuff, but it was, it was a, it was a very long sales pitch. And, and we, we gave up a large portion of our select board meeting on a sales pitch that I think we should have vetted a little bit more before it came before us. You know, give them something like ten minutes or something, or, or, or even have them just send the, the information for us to read first to decide if we wanted to put them on the agenda. I think we need to be careful. I think we need to be careful, I, I just think we need to slow down. When we say we're soliciting public input, which is what we said about that July twenty-first meeting, whether it's an official public hearing or not, sends an implicit message that, that we're in favor of this, and I don't, I don't think we've really said that yet.
I don't. I'm gonna disagree with you a little bit, obviously, which is okay. I, and I've given this some thought, because I know, I know we did have our, you know, we, we kinda see it from a different light. I think having a meeting on public input, no matter what happens, I don't, I don't, I don't want anybody to think that me or this board is pushing any sort of a project right now forward with anything. I do however, think that, that the town and the residents and the, in past select boards and me being on a couple of them and this one here, I think you've sat on this project or the, the racetrack for too long. I think it's time that we, as a board, owe it to our town and, and stuff to, and I, and I mean, I know it's private property, I totally understand that. But it's also one of those properties right now that I'm still very concerned about the building that's still standing, that we've had promises of a fence, we've had promises of other things. A lot of those firemen and rescue squad people that respond down there, there, I was involved with those people, not some of the new ones obviously, but they're my family. And I have a huge problem still sitting there, not doing anything about the building that's there that's extremely dangerous.
To be clear, I'm not against, I'm not thinking about the building.
Oh, I know you're not.
But I, but I, I think the board has, this board and previous boards has expressed a lot of concern about assuming ownership and responsibility for that property. It is private property, and we, so far, every discussion we have has not engaged or involved the owners of the property. I think there's a lot of things to talk about on this, and it's not, it's not against moving forward, but no matter what, this is going to move slowly, and we heard that from the person giving the, giving the presentation.
Lot of work.
There are a lot of moving parts and a lot of risk, and I always have a lot of, 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 of concern, in fact, a lot of opposition, when the, essentially what that's going to do, if we assume ownership of that property, which all of it hinges on that, is one, it, it transfers risk for somebody else's benefit to the taxpayers of Powell. And if there is a possibility that once we own that property, that nothing else moves forward, and now, now the taxpayers are on the hook for mediation of the property, that's the huge risk that I see, and I think that needs a lot of vetting before we, we need to have concrete answers of all the steps that are gonna occur before we can even have a really in-depth discussion on it. It's a, a old saying, is there is nothing, there's nothing more dangerous than, than people making decisions to risk nothing for being wrong. And that, that sort of assumption of risk by the media increases decisions made, made by those who, who can now defer a lot of their risk assessment to someone else. I, I, I think there's a lot of danger here, and I think we just, all I'm saying is, I, we can have a meeting on the twenty-first that is exactly for this, but we need to have a lot of answers, and we can spin it as a public, as a public hearing or as public input. The public is always welcome to give us an input, right? If, if it made an above-the-fold article in the banner, so people are aware that this, that this is on the table, there's nothing preventing people from calling into select board meetings, this one or that one, and giving their input on them. I just need to, I, I, I really think we need, there is a lot of, I, I cannot stress enough that there's a lot of risk here. And, and, and we need to talk about motivations and, and everything else, I mean, all of the things that could happen. The reason I, I laid that out as, well, one of the things that bugged me when I read it, and I gotta go back and review the meeting when I read it in the banner, is that with support from the individual who made the, who made the presentation, we might be able to talk, talk the, the LLC that owns the racetrack into selling to Powell. Well, that was never, we never even expressed in a, a desire to assume that property, and I would think that, that, I'm just guessing, I can't speak for the, for the private ownership, but I would think that, that, that losing ownership of that property that's very difficult to do anything with would be a huge benefit to that, to, to the owners of the property immediately. I don't think there's a lot of convincing to do there, if that's what we were going to do. So I, I'm, I have a lot of concerns, and I really think this needs to slow down. This is way too big.
Well, I don't think anybody's trying to really force anything. I just, I'm, I, my opinion, Bob, is that, that, my opinion is we, we really need, and I don't, and I'm not saying that we need to go fast, but we just need to start moving forward with the racetrack property.
Perhaps, but I don't think the right way to do it is to have the, somebody who's giving us the sales pitch there to answer questions from the public. Because now we've, we've elevated, we've elevated essentially the salesman to, to a position of answering questions. I think we need to go through the legal aspects of what will it take to acquire this property, what grants are available, should we acquire the property, what steps need to take, need to happen, all of those steps, in order for that to become a realization. It, it, there's a lot of things about the viability of it that I have problems with too, and I've looked at the proposal.
Well, I, I think that, that having someone come in and, and with some sort of a proposal, and then, I, I agree with you on, on the public comment portion of it, of, of anybody that's, that's given the proposal, not answering the questions, I think the questions should be directed, or the comments should be directed to the select board.
Agreed totally.
Oh, you know, that, that's, that's where we answer any questions from public, from the public.
And that means we have a lot of research to do in twenty-one days, if I'm sorry.
Have we heard from the property owner recently? When was the last time the town or our attorneys attempted to contact them?
And that's, and I, I'm not, I'm not sure, but that's also a big concern.
Well, that would, that would be one of the, I think we should at least invite a representative from them to come talk to us, just for all we know, they could already have plans in the works to do something with them.
I don't think they've gotten back to the fire safety either, because nothing's happened.
I, I, Brian, it's been-
I know it's been years.
No, no, it's not, it hasn't been years. It's been months since anyone's heard, as far as I know. It's been months since anyone's heard from the property owner's designated contact person. The last time was about the fence going up. They came here, they couldn't open the gate or something, I don't, it's, you know, there was, you know, but they couldn't get the lock to open or whatever, didn't know how to get into the lock.
The people fishing don't seem to have a problem getting the gate open.
I, I'm not, I'm not gonna speculate. I, I've personally talked to the, the contact person, I've, I've talked to Steve Solar. You know, I, he's, he's given me- Um, you know, I, he's, he's given me some, um, hope in the past, but it's been six, eight months since I've had contact with him.
Been years for me and, and that was my experience, responsive for a couple of calls and then.
Then disappears for, for whatever. Um, I think if nothing else, um, if nothing else, it just, it'll get, it'll get some interest going back in, in the property for whatever reason. You know, somebody's gonna, somebody's gonna come up with a, an idea or whatever, um, you know, and you know, I think, I think this is, you know, on, on the surface, sure, it's a, you know, it's an awesome idea on the surface and I, I agree with Bob, there's a lot of vetting that has to be done. There's a lot of legwork.
Yeah, it's a long, complicated process with a lot that can go wrong.
That's right.
There's a lot of risk.
Oh, that's.
Well, that's why I was wondering if we've had contact with the property owner.
Risk for the town.
Cause I think at the very least.
They should be here.
They should be here. At the very least, we should be like, hey, we had somebody propose this idea to us, do you know anything about this?
Well, the, the bottom line is, I gotta bet, I gotta bet that he knows that this is on the table.
Almost certainly, and I would invite everybody to watch the Parks and Recs committee meeting where, uh, this was first proposed and then it was sent over to here. Uh, there is information on that, please watch it, watch the presentation.
But I, you know, I'm, you know, I made the paper. Um, I'm sure that the property owners don't live in Bangladesh that don't have some sort of contact, you know what I'm saying? Uh, I'm sure that the property owners and the designated contact person knows that there's some stuff going on that's on the table, potentially.
And, and I would assume that too, but you know what they say when you assume. I, I would just like to, at the very least, through our due diligence, to extend the hand to the property owner that, hey, we're actively discussing this, do you want to have a discussion with us? Even if it says they just sent an email statement to us.
I can try to reach out to him.
I'm, I'm pretty positive that he's aware of it.
Well, that's, that's probably cool, but I said.
Let's, let's, let's reach out.
To me, there's no moving forward without engaging the owners.
No, no, I agree. Perfect.
Their consulting fee.
So you'll reach out?
Yeah, I'll reach out and see what I can do.
See what you can do.
Perfect.
Can we also reach out to the, wasn't the state fire marshal doing something about the property and they were, and I don't know where that stands now? Because they.
The last, Angie and I met with, um.
There you go, my dear.
To date on that, Bob. Angie and I were down there with the state fire marshal's office.
Can't have them, just take a picture.
I believe it was in October, right, was it in October?
Yes.
And Rebecca, the three of us, I think it was just the three of us, right?
Yeah.
Um, with several representatives from the fire marshal's office. And at that point, what they told us was that they were turning the situation over to the state lawyers.
Attorney general's office?
To try to get.
Or the lawyers for the fire and safety.
I, I don't remember to be honest with you, Jamie.
I don't think they specified, they just said they were gonna turn it over.
Yeah. Uh, to try to get the fence and try to get some stuff taken care of.
Yeah.
But that was in October.
Yeah, so it's.
Okay.
We're reaching out, uh, reaching out again and finding out where we are on that.
Uh, GJ Garrel was down, who else, who else did you have?
Uh, GJ and then it was Michael DeRochers.
Oh, yeah.
Mike DeRocher.
Mike DeRocher was here.
Yeah.
I don't think Matt was down, Jamie, and there was, yeah.
I can't think of the gentleman's name that used to be a way of sound fire department style on the, working for him.
Yeah, I'm not sure. So let's reach out to them too, if we can, to the state farmer's office, see where they're at, please.
Will be.
Any more discussion on that?
Shouldn't you have on public comment before we go into executive?
Well, that's a, that's a good.
Can we open less?
Yeah, we can, we can, um, open up public comment.
That was my bad.
That's okay. Yeah, we can open up public comment right now before we go into executive and then we'll have a public comment session after executive.
So I would just like to say real quickly that if anybody doesn't know, the, um, schoolhouse was moved. They did a phenomenal job. It was Gould, is that the right name?
Gould, yes, and Flock Crane.
And what?
Flock Crane.
Flock Crane. They did an amazing job. It was spectacular to watch and I want to say thank you to Aaron and all of his crew.
And Tara has posted a tremendous amount of videos.
Everybody's done a tremendous amount of videos. And also Eric and his crew.
Comments down.
And the road crew, they did an amazing job. It was wonderful to watch and I want to thank everybody.
I, I will say that, to, to solidify that, I will say that, that, um, they had the road closure hours on there, uh, to three o'clock. And at 2:58, the road was opened. And I don't know if you ever see that anymore in today's world.
It's real close.
It was close, but they, they had the road open to 2:58, they were, they were, you know, that's, that's when the road crew opened the road up. Um, and I think it was, I think it was a tremendously professional job all the way through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there was no, you know, there was no downtime. I think they worked the whole time they were here.
And they were here till nine PM. Were they here that late? I left at 6:30.
Yeah, the crane, the crane setting crew, they worked late, when, I, you know. Yeah, they were, they were here, you know, which is kind of unheard of in today's world anyways, but.
Right, they did 12 hour day.
Really cool to watch.
It was.
Definitely like historic, you know, it was nice to be a part of it.
If you want to see a synopsis of it, there is a video on YouTube and I don't know if we posted that or not from the channel, from the channel.
Channel three, yeah, they were here, yeah.
I have it all on video. I, um, I took it down because of some comments, but I might just post it on YouTube, that's probably a better option.
I had a public person ask me if we're gonna have the primary vote in there, if we'd be ready by then.
Not half primary, but for November.
I just figured I'd put it out there.
I think they're, I think they're shooting for November.
Yeah, they are.
You know, they're shooting for November.
That'll be pretty cool.
You know, they, they had a lot of the, the, as much preliminary work done, obviously, you know, there's some, some support laws and whatever done before it even got moved over here, so. Um, you know, I know they're, I know they're pushing, I know they're pushing, you know.
Well, they did a good job.
Yep, they sure did.
As far as having to put your videos back on or thing and just shut comments off for it.
No, no, she needs, there was comments in the video.
No, 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 it was, it was on the videos, because I, I couldn't post it to the town, I posted it to my personal page and then I couldn't figure out how to turn the comments off on my personal page, so I just, I just took it all down.
Okay, Rick, is there anybody raising their hand?
Anybody raising their hand for public comment?
Nope.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session for legal, Hagerty versus Town Hopper of a, uh, judgment.
And there won't be any action taken on that?
Um, we're not sure, there might be.
There might be action.
Just so we announce to the public.
Yep, there may be action.
Okay. Did you make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That should be quick.
Recording in progress.
I'll entertain a motion to come out of executive session for legal Hagerty Town Hopper of judgment.
So moved.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve an offer of judgment in the amount of $5,802 payable from town funds if accepted to attempt to resolve the Leo Hagerty lawsuit.
Any discussion, questions?
All those, if, uh, uh, the only thing I would say about it is it's the $5,400 stipend plus legal, plus, uh, some, uh, plea.
That's right, it's a $5,400 stipend that, um, for his term of employment or work. Uh, appointed, whatever, however you want to say it, is a term of appointment, I guess would be.
As health.
As health officer, that's right, okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Um, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for contract and cost sharing discussion.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we're going to invite CAT TV to our July 11th or 14th, or July 14th meeting. A representative from, uh, CAT TV to that meeting. Uh, like to open up public comment this time?
Anybody out there?
Four of us in, and I'm not one of them.
No public comment here?
Nope.
Oh, should do a adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everyone for being here.
Thanks.
Thanks.
CAT TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support CAT TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.